Good evening, West Orange. Good evening to our community residents tonight being here at the special council meeting to open to the public and to go over the procedures tonight to appoint a worthy resident to the position that former councilwoman Patty Spango held. I'm asking everyone tonight to act in good spirit, in fellowship and true residency of this procedure. It's a very important procedure, and I know we're all here for the same benefit to serve the residents and the township of West Orange. Madam Clerk, would you like to do the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on September 9th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building in West Orange and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on September 9th, 2015. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviek?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Garino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to my colleagues and thank you to the residents and candidates here tonight. At this moment, I would like to call up Richard Trank, the Township Attorney, to explain the procedure and how the process will be handled tonight.
Thank you, Council President. Just to recap, the resignation, as you indicated, of Councilwoman Spango occurred on Friday, September 4th. Pursuant to New Jersey state statutes, you had three days from that date to either fill that vacancy by a majority of this council, of the remaining council, or it will remain vacant. On September 8th, 2015, this council met in its normal meeting, and at that time it was determined and announced to the public and then put on the website and published in the appropriate places that anyone who had an interest in filling the position would submit their resume and a cover letter to the municipal clerk, Ms. Carnival, by September 16th, 2015. When I'm done, Ms. Carnival will indicate who the number, I believe it was 17, but I'll let her tell for her function. It was announced, agreed, and published that tonight, beginning at 7:00, there would be a meeting to interview up to three people who were selected by each of the four remaining council people. And that is the process that will begin after public comment. Public comment, once I answer any questions from the council as to the procedures, will commence and then conclude. So, once public comment is concluded, it was agreed at the September 8th meeting that there would be 15 minutes allocated for each candidate who's going to be interviewed tonight. My understanding is there were six total candidates who were chosen by the four council people and who have been advised and are present tonight. The 15 minutes will be as follows. Ms. Carnival has a pink heart-shaped pail that perfectly matches her, and she has, under the guise of a big-six accounting firm, no, herself as a municipal clerk, she has typed the name of each one of the six people on a separate card, and they will be randomly shook up, not taken out, but shaken up and put back in there. And when you're ready to start the council interviews, she will pick one, and she will announce the name, and that person will come to the podium. That person will get a two-minute opening statement during which no one will interrupt. Two minutes, Ms. Carnival will be timing the 15 minutes, which is the total, and the two minutes. At the end of two minutes, the council candidate will stop, and then what will happen is one member of the council will ask one question, no subparts. And I would recommend, just to keep it simple, go clockwise. Start with Councilman Krokoviek. He'll ask a question, he'll get an answer. The candidate will get up to a minute and a half or whatever amount of time you choose, but I would suggest somewhere between a minute and two minutes. We're into the 13 minutes of the 15. Again, no follow-up questions. Councilman Krokoviek asks question one, candidate answers up to a minute and a half or whatever time you feel is appropriate. Obviously, there would be some benefit for the candidates to answer concisely so they can get more questions. When that question and answer is done, then Councilman Cirillo goes. Then same process, then Council President Garino, then Councilwoman McCartney, and then if there's still time in the 13 minutes, then it goes back to Councilman Krokoviek. And you keep going until the 15 minutes or the 13 minutes is used up. Then we go to candidate two. Ms. Carnival will pick the next one out of the pink pail. And now, Councilman Cirillo starts. And we get one question, Councilman, no subparts, no follow-up. This is not the Donald Trump debates, okay? We'll save that for CNN or Fox. The goal is to let the candidate speak and answer as many of your questions, but we keep going. If you finish the cycle, then it goes back to whoever started. So, in the first sequence, it'll go back to Councilman Krokoviek. He'll ask another question. Now, again, it is possible you won't get through two full cycles because 13 minutes, if they go, if you choose a minute and a half, somebody can do the math better than I can, it will not necessarily permit it, but it's possible that a candidate, I'm sorry, that a candidate could answer yes or no or answer 15 seconds, and then you'll get more questions. But again, in that process, every council person gets an equal opportunity to ask questions. It never starts with the same council person. There's no pre-ordaining of the process because we don't even know who Ms. Carnival's going to pick out of the pink bucket. And then the candidates are heard from, to the maximum extent. When that is done, so roughly it should be an hour and a half, six times 15 if I've done the math right, then you're in public session. We will not go into executive session. That's the recommendation of the Law Department. And at that point, any council person can make a nomination from the floor, from, obviously, your floor, to nominate X or Y or Z candidate if it gets a second. If it doesn't get a second, then it obviously doesn't get debated. If it gets a second, it's debated and voted on as soon as the question is called. And that's the process. The candidate, if there is, again, there has to be three affirmative votes for a candidate to be selected. So, 2-1-1 doesn't work. It's got to be three affirmative votes in order to select a new council candidate. If there is a council candidate selected tonight, they will be sworn in on the next regular council meeting at the beginning of the meeting, which is next Tuesday, September 29th. I can't imagine that you can't, won't complete the task today. We did reserve another day if we had to, but that was when we thought we might have 12 candidates or whatnot. So, that is the final, that's the process. And of course, I want to remind you that if by October 2nd, which is 30 days from the date, you have not, by a three-person vote, selected a new council person, then the seat will remain vacant. So, I'll answer any questions of anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Any questions from the council? No questions from the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm going to open it to public comment. I now open the floor and a microphone and the council's ear to any members of the public wishing to be heard before the council.
So, the only thing I had suggested, Council President, is obviously, public comment's public comment, so anybody is permitted to say anything about any topic. Obviously, this meeting is really about one topic, but we can't restrict public comments if we won't. It'll be the typical way I had just recommended strongly and heard that the council, I know lots of time to hear a whole panoply of issues and discussions, and you will like the comment. So, if you follow, it seems to me that in order for this process to play out appropriately, you might say, "I'm going to defer my deliberations till I hear the candidates." And then when you're in the course of voting at the end of the night, you might reflect on what someone else said or not, or you might not. But to comment before you've heard the interviews, again, respectfully, but it's totally up to you, would suggest that you may or may not have made decisions, and I assume that no one has made a final decision until you vote. But that's just a recommendation of the Law Department. The council is obviously free to do what it wants.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. To the public, is there anyone here from the general public wishing to speak to the township council? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Went up to the podium. Please, and please speak into the microphone, your name and your address, please.
Sharon Sherman, 7 Lakeview Drive, West Orange. Since I didn't get a chance to see online, could you just tell us who the candidates that you're considering are?
Sure, Madam Clerk.
Michaela Bennett. Michelle Castellino. Jerome Eben. Adam Goldman. Akil Kalfani. And Bert Parinella.
Okay.
Those are the six candidates.
Those are the six. Okay, so those were narrowed down from...
From 17.
From 17.
Okay, well, then I guess my comment would just be, I'm surprised that Irv Schwartzbaum's name was not part of the group. Irv ran for town council this past election, and for two vacant seats, he came in as the third-place candidate, and it was a very, very close election. So, I was originally coming to speak on his behalf, and I guess my comment just is, it's sad that the township, when we had our vote, many of us in the town voted for Irv, and it's kind of, I guess, surprising then that he is not one of those that you considered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
What was your address again?
7 Lakeview.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
The candidate, the former candidate did not submit a resume, right?
Yes.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
I don't recall seeing that.
There's one page. Wasn't even a resume, just a letter.
Well, it was.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard before the council? Okay, seeing none, I close public comment. Madam Clerk?
Okay. So, I'm going to pick the first candidate.
Again, just explain how you create, how you did this?
Okay, I took index cards, I took labels, and I put each name on the card, one of, you know...
Each card's identical size, and there's nothing different?
Absolutely, yes. Folded them all in half.
And it's no peanut butter or any...
Yeah, no, no, it's all good. The first candidate is Akil Kalfani.
Is he in it?
Yes.
He can see the time?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Good evening, everyone. How are you all doing? As you said, my name is Akil Kalfani. I want to, first of all, thank the council for selecting me and for an interview. I want to thank you for your effort to bring this process to fruition. I want to also thank Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Spango, for her service. I think that, you know, we now have had a good time for someone to, for her to serve, and now we're looking at moving on and what this township will develop from here. And I also want to thank the citizens of West Orange for those who supported me in the process before, but also those who are here to make sure as we're going through forward that we continue to have a fair and just process. So, I thank everybody for being involved. I want to say, as a person who has been in West Orange for a long time, you know, I've lived here now for over 17 years, I earned a PhD in sociology from the University of Pennsylvania and have been working as a sociologist ever since, but I've also worked arduously here in West Orange and throughout Essex County, trying to work on issues that I think are germane to both the township and the county. And, you know, one of those things that I did in that process was to work, I was a, worked at Essex County College, running the Urban Issues Institute, so I worked with lots of folks who dealt with urban issues, urban planning. And so, looking at West Orange as a place, I want to say that here I'm working to now figure out ways that we can push the agenda forward as West Orange residents. And I think that one of the things that we can do here is we take the opportunity to change the way things are operating, both downtown but also throughout the city. We have to make sure that throughout the township...
Thank you.
...we have the consistent flow of what we're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Kalfani.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Councilman Krokoviek.
Thank you. This is probably where you were headed in your statement, but what would you say are your top two or three priorities you would have if you got on the council?
I would say my top two or three priorities, one is certainly working with other council members to finish our downtown development, but also working to develop that within the context of West Orange broadly speaking. So that I think that we need to not just focus on what's going on downtown, but to see how that fits within the context of the overall picture of the municipality. How is it that we're going to move West Orange forward, to attract people here, to increase our property values, to create new sources of revenue? And so, I think the other piece is in generating, so the second one I would say is that we need to figure out ways to generate new revenue. And I think that part of the downtown development is part of that, but I think that West Orange is so big that we have many things that we can do to generate new revenue. And part of that would be, you know, if we look at right what's going on with the Essex County, the area with the zoo, that there's lots of things going on over there. We know that they're expecting that there's going to be over 700,000 people who are coming annually in the years to come. So, if they have 700,000 people who are coming to West Orange, but West Orange is not reaping any revenue from it, what is it that we can do as a township so that we capitalize on those visitors? I would say also with regard to that is that you say a similar thing right down here at the Edison Center, right? So, they already have over 60,000 people who come there every year, but once again, West Orange is not getting revenue.
I'm sorry, we were going to limit the answers to a minute and a half so that each council person could get a question. I, I'm sorry, Karen, Ms. Carnival, do you understand?
Yeah.
So, it's a question, you get a minute and a half, so maybe give them 15 seconds.
Okay. No one gave me a cue, so I was just...
Okay, no, it's not your fault at all. It's our, so I just want every council person to get a question, so...
Gotcha.
I think that's what the rules are. Mr. Cirillo?
Yeah, can you share with the town council what your biggest, in your opinion, is your biggest achievement as a resident on behalf of the community?
Sure, yes. I've been working with, one, I've served on the West Orange, I'm the vice president of the West Orange African Heritage Association. I also am a member of the West Orange...
Human Relations.
Human Relations Commission. And so, recently, we had a big discussion with the students. We work with the students at the high school to come and talk about their interrelations with the police and how the students sometimes feel that there's tension, and so we did, we created an opportunity for them to kind of address those problems, those challenges. And I think that we created some bridges between the students and the police as well as other folks in town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kalfani, what do you think are the biggest, is one of the biggest assets the township of West Orange has?
I think definitely location, you know? We have, we're here, we have both the hills and we have the low area. And so, we can benefit from many different things with our proximity to other municipalities. I mean, the development of the Arts Council here in West Orange, I think is, we partner, the more we partner with Orange and West Orange together, I think it's a great asset. I think that, obviously, what's going on with the Essex County area is a great asset. Our parks are a great asset here. I think that people come here and they have an opportunity to see and go and be in nature in someplace that's not far, right? Not every township has Eagle Rock as well as South Mountain Reservation, and so you can come and you can do lots of different things. And, you know, I think, I believe our schools are great and that we're, you know, we have a great group of folks, some of them who are here tonight, who are helping to improve the school system...
15 seconds.
...to accomplish those things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Mr. Kalfani.
Hi.
Presidential candidate Ben Carson said in a recent debate, in a recent debate, that there are strengths in numbers when leaders work to unite. Based on your resume and what you've just said, you've done quite a bit of that. And we're frequently here to term that we have the best interest in town in mind. How, describe that in your, I guess, you know, I'm thinking in modern terms. I rarely get on Facebook, but it makes me think of, if you could upload a photo right now that shows how you, what you just mentioned about the African Heritage Group and work that you've done, I sat in on those five weeks with the Human Relations Commission, how would you unite that to the town? How would you bring that forward? And if that were a picture that you could upload, what would that picture be that you uploaded?
I mean, I think, I think that's a good question. And I think that what we would have to upload is probably a video instead of a picture, right? We would have to upload images of things that we've done over time, you know, so that the downtown festival, I think those, that's a great picture. I think that if we look at the West Orange African Heritage Association, right, they have the Kwanzaa program, another great picture, that the activities at the schools, I think those are great pictures. So that if we had this montage of pictures, as you say, that this would give us a great, give other folks a great idea of what West Orange is about. And I think that if they see us engaged in both political discussion, social commentary and discussion, that I think that that gives people a desire to want to come to West Orange, let alone the fact that we're close to New York. We're right here at the, we have the, you know, the jitney and other things that help us to get access to it.
Thank you.
Councilman Krokoviek?
Thank you. As you probably know, redevelopment is a frequent topic here, and one of the ongoing issues is the frequent events of default, primarily from the redevelopers' frequent property tax delinquencies. The previous redeeveler was in default when the council majority approved the new deal last month, and the new redeeveler remains in default on its August 1st property taxes, according to the town's website. The most recent agreements require the redeeveler under penalty of default to resume construction on the project by the end of September, less than a week away. Would you support declaring an event of default if the redeeveler does not perform under its contract? Why or why not?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we've looked at, I've been at many of the town council meetings and seen and been engaged and read some of the stuff, and I think that when we look at what the investors have brought to the table, I think we have to sit back and make some hard decisions. And, you know, whether it's an article of default or not is something I think that we as a team would have to have a discussion about. And so, I'm willing to have those types of discussions, and some of them are not easy and some of them are not desirable, but I think that we have to engage in a discourse that's going to allow us to bring that to a head. And I think that it's not any one person's decision, but it's our negotiated outcome that helps us to bring that to bear.
Thank you. Councilman Cirillo?
Sure. Let's talk about zoning violations. Let's say that hypothetically, there's a, and this issue comes up once in a while, the fact that there may be a large volume of zoning violations, be it because we may not have the manpower to address it, it could be an issue of administration. Hypothetically, if that were the case in a municipality, how, do you have any recommended public policy? How do you address an issue like that?
Well, I think first we have a zoning board, and the zoning board's responsibility is to engage in that discourse. And then if it doesn't, they're unable to resolve it, then, you know, they both involve council as well as the, as legal council and the town council and the mayor's office. And so, then you have to really engage in those discussions to find out what is it that, what are the nuances there that either the zoning board wasn't able to resolve or the administration seeks assistance from the council or the council is seeking assistance or even residents? And I think that then we have to look at, you know, sometimes we have to take a step back and find out what are the best practices? Or what have other municipalities done to address those issues that we haven't taken the steps to look at? Maybe they have some other solutions that we need to consider. And so, in my work with the New Jersey Urban Mayors Association, I've worked with lots of mayors, lots of city council people, lots of city planners, and I have lots of relationships with those folks even today to be able to have those types of discourses so that I can get some ideas if we need to bring something to here to West Orange that we don't already have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kalfani, do you know anything about the concept of complete streets?
Yes, I know a little bit about it, yes.
Okay. Can you tell me about what you feel the complete streets issue would be for West Orange?
Well, I mean, you know, West Orange is, unlike smaller towns, West Orange is a larger town, so complete streets in West Orange, you know, would be that we have to look at how do we navigate the space where we have places like, you know, the access to the 280 on our two major thoroughfares that do so, or maybe three. How do we develop that? And I think also with complete streets, one of the things that would be nice for us to look at is, is this something that, when I was at the University of Pennsylvania, they worked on? And that is that how do you have more walking areas to incorporate more residents into the township itself? So that there's places that maybe are streets today, but maybe need to be altered into some other type of thing to create community. So, I think the idea of complete streets are about safety, but also about community reinforcement. So, how do we, how do we create a concept of community within the context of that?
Thank you.
Sir, I wanted to follow up on the redevelopment question.
Yes.
Because in your resume, it says, "Number five, I will work hard to complete the downtown redevelopment and ensure that it's part of a comprehensive project." Yet at our last council meeting, when that was discussed, you were not in favor of the plan. So, tell me, how would we work together to ensure that that's a comprehensive project?
I think that my, and I was against it both in my campaign as well, and so that the issue becomes if it's something that is on the books and that is not something that's retractable, then we have to figure out how do we navigate that space therein, you know? So that my solution would be to dig further into what the structure of that agreement is, right? I don't have full, the full disclosure. I would like to have more access to what the, maybe you guys have in closed session because that would give me more insight into what the agreements are and what they're not. Maybe in the public, sometimes I've been on boards, and so I know some things are in private sessions that are not in public sessions. So, maybe there's some other ways, there's some other subtleties there which we can look at that will help us to navigate that space in a way that I, maybe I don't understand right now. And there's always room for that, I believe.
Fair enough. Thank you.
How many times, sir?
133.
Councilman Krokoviek, question?
Do you see any opportunities to improve the effectiveness of the council in executing its responsibilities and better representing residents? Any suggestions?
Yeah, I think that we definitely, as council, would need to, I think, you know, having town meetings in the wards would be a great way to do that, right? So that we go out to each ward and that we have discussions in the wards so that the ward residents know that we are interested and concerned with their issues. So that whether I'm brought in or somebody else is brought in, I think that that would be a great idea. That now those folks in each one of the wards feels like that we're definitely hands-on, right? And I think that what people want to see is that they are, that the representatives who've been elected are concerned about their issues. And in certain places, I think that people still think that their issues are not being fully adjudicated, not being even addressed. And so, therefore, I think that as a council, once again, whether I'm brought in or not, that some of the things that I think that could be done, and I'm looking forward to being brought in, but I think that these are some ways that we could do that. We would, we would go to each ward and have a meeting, that people would be able, open to that, and they would be, I think you'd have a great turnout. Like, sometimes we don't have a great turnout here, but if you're there and maybe it's in a school or setting or something else, it doesn't have to be often, but it could be, you know, once or twice a year.
Kindness up, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Madam Clerk? You want to get Vanna White here?
Michaela Bennett.
Good evening, Ms. Bennett.
Good evening. Council President, council members, and members of the community and the administration, my name is Michaela Bennett, and I live at 12 Fairway Drive with my husband and our son. The reason that I wanted to participate is because I think this is a very unique opportunity. I am not someone who would ever be interested in running for a position. I say that here and now. I wouldn't be interested in running for a council position. I would be interested in serving. I'm someone who, if you've had the opportunity to review my resume, service is central to who I am. I'm an attorney with the State of New Jersey, and I served in the... I'm an attorney with the State of New Jersey, and I serve in the capacity of something akin to the chief legal officer at Greystone Park Psychiatric Hospital. So in my function, I make sure that 1,500 people who many times have different, different interests are all working together towards the good of those who are vulnerable and in need of support and services. I'm also a social worker. I have a master's degree in social work from New York University, and I've put it to use at, with at-risk adolescents. I came here to New Jersey to get my law degree with my husband, and shortly after getting here, we decided we were going to plant roots. We planted roots in a neighboring town and decided to purchase one of the lofts at the Highland Lofts, and I became the president of the Highland Lofts Association. So I do know firsthand the benefit of lofts. I do know firsthand the benefit of adaptive reuse and revitalization. And then shortly after moving there, I was asked to serve on the zoning board there. And I served at a time in Orange when all of the revitalization for the valley was being presented to the zoning board. So I do understand something about revitalization, downtown, downtown neighborhoods and what it is.
Time is up.
I'm really bad at being concise.
We won't believe me, it's horrible to call.
Attorneys, yes.
It's hard. Councilwoman Cirilla.
Oh, sure. You, you started talking about revitalization and redevelopment. How would you utilize that tool, tax abatements, pilots, in order to help us revitalize the downtown area of the town?
So, I think, I think what's important to know about me is that I'm a consensus builder, and the way I view this opportunity is, it's not to come in and do anything but fill a vacancy so that business can continue. I don't, I don't know that I would end up with an agenda beyond making sure that the important business at West Orange is being managed and managed carefully, right? So I do, I'm a consensus builder, I'm, I'm, I think I'm smart enough to, to get up to speed on issues, but would I use tax abatements, et cetera? I'd have to, I'd have to weigh whether it's in the best interest or not. I'd have to consider whether or not tax abatements move the, the township to a, to a place where it is, I, I wouldn't want to give up the opportunity for the township to increase its tax ratables, right? That would not be my first inclination. My first inclination would be to figure out how we can derive maximum benefit out of the natural resources that we have in a building that could be utilized for adaptive reuse, in generating opportunities in a downtown to really coalesce what the...
Fifteen seconds.
To coalesce what the, what the brand is of our downtown.
Give a just question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight. What would you consider is your biggest contribution as a resident to the township of West Orange?
So it's interesting, when I heard that question posed, I thought to myself, I'm going to have a very atypical answer. We moved to West Orange in June of 2005, and shortly after that, Hurricane Katrina occurred. And when Hurricane Katrina occurred, there were two families in West Orange who took on families, and we were one of them. We took on a family of, we had a big old Victorian up on the hill, and we took on a family of five and said basically, on a, on a message board, we found a pilot who would fly them to Philadelphia. We, I had my cousin meet them in Houston. She got them on the plane to Philadelphia. We rented a minivan because they had stayed together through losing everything down in New Orleans, and I said to my husband, we're not going to drive two cars to Philadelphia and split up a family. We rented the minivan, we went and picked them up, and they lived with us for a little while, until West Orange really put them back on their feet. And when West Orange put them back on our, on their feet, they had one infant, they had one child at the Gregory School, and their daughter Dulce was at Edison. And when I tell you that Dulce comes back every year and takes care of our son, and is now on a full scholarship...
Fifteen seconds.
From the Navy at Tulane, pre-med, and is about to go out and serve the country as a, as a Navy officer, I would say that although that's not necessarily serving West Orange, it is in many ways the spirit of who we are as a family in West Orange.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Councilwoman McCrory.
So I know about your experience with Katrina, and I think that that was very kind, generous, and very moral decision that you made.
Thank you.
So my question really is, at this point in time now, what do you see is, what is the, what is your interest right now at this moment in time for the township? Like, if you were to tackle something or initiate something new, what would that be?
So, the reason I'm standing here is because I don't have a political agenda. It isn't for personal gain. It really, I, I got involved with a conversation on social media, listening to a lot of people who didn't really understand the, the unique value that adaptive reuse and revitalization and lofts can play in a community, you know, and having, I mean, look, I have a unique vantage point. I was the president of a loft association, small albeit, but a loft association, that took a building that brought in $5,000 of taxes and turned it into more than $65,000 of taxes, while displacing nobody, while improving the neighborhood. So I am, you know, a friend, a friend developer had, he was developing soft lofts in the valley, and he used to call me the loft queen. I'm like a big proponent of lofts. I would love to see the downtown really coalesce and become a, a destination. You know, the good work that Megan Brill does downtown with the Alliance can only get better. I remember hearing somebody, I think it was Councilwoman Kropoviac, raising the fact that for the first time, instead of losing tax dollars, we, we switched, the downtown switched to the positive.
Ten seconds.
So I'm, I, what I'd like to do for the council is really fill a space, keep work, keep the work flowing, and, you know, participate for fifteen months. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cirilla, I mean, Councilwoman Kropoviac, sorry.
Thank you. Would like to follow up, because I, I was very interested that you have zoning experience from another town, that you have real estate experience. Could you tell me a little bit about, A, what you would do about a default for the downtown redevelopment, and B, whether you had any thoughts about how to get the other redevelopment project we have here over in the valley going? It's also stalled.
So, I'm going to give you a very lawyerly answer, which, you know, usually doesn't make anyone happy except the lawyers in the room. I don't know enough to answer your question about the default. I, you know, I'm a person who focuses on, I don't know if it was the lifeguard in me, I don't know if it's the risk manager in me, but I focus on unintended consequences. And I wouldn't even be comfortable answering your question until I had additional information. I mean, I would want to, at a minimum, know what you know before I could answer any question, because, I, look, I know you're a proponent of getting, getting things moving, and to the extent that we're not benefiting from something that is a natural resource here, downtown, or in the valley, is, is a detriment to all of us. So there is a benefit to getting things moving, but I don't know that default necessarily would do that. I, so I don't know, I, I, I don't know enough to answer your question, and that's, I'm sorry, but a, not a great answer.
It's a good answer.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cirilla.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Property taxes? The level of property taxes, whether it be high or low, is a relative term. It depends on the economic situation, it depends on location, it depends on, you know, how taxing you, how taxing a municipality is relative to county government, state. Some, oftentimes, we hear from non-residents how high the property taxes are in West Orange, sometimes we hear from residents. How do you answer a question like that, being a property owner and someone that's invested in, in the municipality?
So, we're in contract to purchase 35 Old Indian. Nobody, please, nobody, please, everybody, everybody stay behind me that that goes through. We have a lot riding on that. That said, the property taxes are going to make me start a part-time job. Twenty-seven thousand dollars, I'm taking on basically a mortgage to, to continue to live in this town, and we had the option to, obviously, to move. But I view property taxes as a, a necessary evil, right? I view property taxes as one of those things that actually work to keep a community vital, and I know that that's not a, a popular perspective, but for the period of time, first, and, and then, I, let me just say this, I also believe that property taxes can be remedied in, in a, by bringing in ratables. You have a downtown that's bringing in businesses that, that are offsetting the property taxes from others, and you have a very different situation. But again, it's, it's all, it all has to be set up correctly, right? So I, back to...
Fifteen seconds.
What do you tell people?
Question. I'm sorry, no follow-up, so, again, you're finishing. Finish, finish.
Okay, well, so what, what would I say is that, that property taxes are that necessary evil that keep a community vital, and that, you know, no one wants to pay property taxes, but they serve a purpose, and...
Thank you.
The alternative is...
What do you feel, and how do you feel about shared services between municipalities and between inter-municipality organizations, Board of Education, municipal...
I'm smiling because I'm dealing, and I can't get into it, but I'm dealing with this at work, and what do I think about it in this circumstance? I'm watching a dear friend lose a job. So I think that there's the positive and negative of shared services, that in this economy, there is the economy of scale that comes with shared services. I'm very familiar with how South Orange and Maplewood do a decent job with shared services. I think there's a way that shared services can work to the benefit of the community, and I think that there's, you know, that it has to be carefully done so that it does work to the benefit of the community.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCrory.
So speaking of property taxes, there's a question that comes up every time in the budget about our services, municipal services. Is there anything that you think should be eliminated or that might save the dollar here or there?
Not if it's going to mean that the people aren't safe and aren't well taken care of. And, you know, I remember watching the, the awards that you were giving to the officers and the firefighters who, you know, responded to that fire and, and carried two elderly people down the stairs. And to the extent that our municipal services are what keep people safe and take care of people when, you know, the worst happens, I, I, I'm not inclined to, again, you know, coming back to, coming back to, I'm, I'm sorry to say this over again, but I would view my role as someone filling a spot so that business could occur, getting up to speed on everything, and, and reviewing what there is. I don't, although I can be a mover and a shaker, and often am at work, I don't, I wouldn't view that to be my role in, in this function.
Thank you.
Minute and a half.
Mike?
Minute and a half.
Ask him. Councilwoman Kropoviac?
Thank you. Do you see any opportunities to improve the effectiveness of the council in executing its responsibilities and better representing residents?
So, I'm a consensus builder in general, and I will work long and hard to try to come up with consensus, because I don't, every one of you who sit here represent a group of people who put you in the position that you're in. And so to the extent that you all represent who West Orange is, you know, when there isn't consensus here, that means that there's a, there's a section of West Orange who's unhappy. And so to me, the, the, the important thing is to find where we can all agree and to build from there. And I think that this council, like most other things, can work better together and come up with better solutions together, and make sure that, you know, things like the downtown revitalization, the valley revitalization, really get momentum and get going.
Twenty-six seconds.
Thirty-six seconds.
Twenty-six seconds.
Twenty seconds.
The lawyers are making me nervous because they keep conferring.
You ever wa, you ever watch one of our council meetings on television?
I, I always watch your council meetings on television. It's very, yeah, I always do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Michelle Castellino.
Good evening.
Good evening, all. Thank you for having me here this evening for this opportunity. I'm always proud to state that I'm a lifelong resident and a product of the West Orange school system. I met my husband, Tony, who's here this evening, in the library of West Orange Mountain High School. We decided to stay here and raise our children, all home pass through the hallways of all of our schools. Baby just graduated, by the way, fourth generation of Castellinos to go through West Orange High School, so it was a proud June for us. I am a regional business director for Madison Commercial Real Estate Services located in Lakewood, New Jersey. I've been with the firm for about 14 years. I obtain as well as maintain accounts for the firm. I'm also a title closer, so I go out and facilitate residential as well as commercial real estate closings. I work with bank attorneys, real estate attorneys, and loan officers. For the past 20 years, I've been a community activist, very involved in our community, started out when the children were younger in the PTAs. I was never, you know, would just never jump in lightly. I would always jump in to, you know, be the VP of fundraising, or always get on the executive board. I've served on the Eagle Rock Civic organization in my area civic association. We had issues years ago with Colgate Park and safety issues, and I've worked with the police on that level. Also was a proud member of the West Orange Rotary Club at the time. 10 years ago, I shifted gears and was pleased and honored to serve the children of West Orange as an elective official at the West Orange Board of Education. And in that time, I have served the community as board president twice, and currently this year as vice president. My main function when I first came into the school board was reregistration. I wanted to ensure that every student in West Orange actually lived in West Orange.
My turn. Ms. Castellino.
Yes.
You've, you've said about your tremendous community involvement, and it's an important aspect of, of serving the people of West Orange. Can you tell me, what is one of your biggest accomplishments, and something that's really given you satisfaction as a community activist?
Yeah.
And a community volunteer?
Yeah, I've been honored, serving 10 years at the school board is a job that I truly love, and my colleagues are here tonight, I'm honored to have them come and support me this evening. When I first got on the school board, it was all about reregistration and making sure we were having overcrowding issues at the time in the school district. And part of the reason why I want to shift gears at this point in time as well is I've worked with Janice Gary Adams in the past, well, I still work with Janice Gary Adams in regards to these kind of residency issues, so I think it would be a smooth transition for me to work with other township officials, because in my past 10 years, I have been working directly with recreation and whatnot. But on the school board, I had saved, I created policy, I was effective in team building, creating policy, working with my colleagues, and saving hundreds of thousands of dollars for this community, as well as ensuring a, a education for all students in our community.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCrory.
So Michelle, you heard before, we were talking about shared services, and you and I have both served as the liaison, me as council liaison, you as the board of liaison. I want, your, you got, time got cut off on your certificate of habitability. I know that that was not a popular push, you know, you talk about being a community activist, and I know that you did push on that. Can you just say how, what did, what was the impact of moving forward with that?
Okay, well, we accomplished quite a few items when we worked together. Prior to us working together, let me start, I had worked with Councilman Skarbnik when I first got on the school board, and he was instrumental in creating ordinance, which you have the books that we need to utilize in regards to residents who actually use, let individuals use addresses, so they would get a fine, I believe it's a $5,000 fine, Mr. Trunk, if I, if I remember correctly. So we need to utilize that ordinance a little bit better. We also need to look at our certificate of occupancy. We have opened up the communication with our schools, and Janice Gary Adams has been wonderful in her department, and that has been effective in the past few years, past three years, let me go back, we did a reregistration about six years ago, and within that reregistration, 150 students we couldn't account for, they just left the district within that time. We also were able to disenroll 70... wonderful in her department, and that has been effective in the past few years, past three years, let me go back, we did a re-registration about six years ago, and within that re-registration, a hundred and fifty students we couldn't account for, they just left the district within that time. We also were able to disenroll seventy-seven students at that time. Since then, moving forward, each year, about sixty-five, seventy-five students just exit the school district, and we disenroll about forty to fifty students per year.
Councilwoman Kukowiek.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Castellino, you're a candidate for the Board of Education in the November 2015 election. One of the other candidates for the council vacancy, Mr. Schwarzbaum, is all, has also applied for the vacant council position. If you are appointed to the council vacancy, that means that the two other candidates will run unopposed for the two open seats, and of course, the same would happen if we picked Mr. Schwarzbaum. Several residents have emailed the council asking that we not consider you for the vacancy, because it renders that election moot. And I, I just wanted to get a feel for how you would reconcile that you committed to being on the BOE ballot, and now want to be on the council, which, if you were named to the council, it would end the competitiveness of the BOE race.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, I committed to the school board election. This would be my fourth election for the school board, three times. I've been fortunate enough and honored to be elected to this community, so I take that commitment very seriously. We, I guess, it was Labor Day weekend, when my husband and I were enjoying a quiet afternoon on the beach, and my colleague, Ms. Lab, had a text message to me about Councilwoman Spango, and I said, oh, you know, my initial thought was, good for, good for Patty, she, she deserves it, so, she's worked hard in this community. Thought nothing of it, came home, and the phone started ringing. And my immediate answer was, no, I'm committed to the school board race, because I take that very seriously. Fourteen years ago, I ran for council, when, that's when I first met Councilwoman McCartney, we were in the race together, and I was opposed to redevelopment plan at that time, so I just had jumped in that race. So, my interests were always in issues here affecting the township with my, with my heart in the township, whether it's for the, for the children, or supporting the-
Fifteen seconds.
Township directors. But the phone kept ringing, and I kept thinking about it, and it was a really, really tough decision. I actually didn't put my paperwork into that Wednesday, because it was a very hard decision for me to leave a job that I truly loved doing, but I feel that my leadership qualities will be suited here as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. How many years ago, what was it, twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, and you mentioned that you were opposed to redevelopment?
Fourteen years, about fourteen years ago, that was that plan.
Opposed to the redevelopment of the downtown. What is your position, has that, has that position changed? What is your view of redevelopment, tax abatements pilots as a vehicle for improving the downtown area?
Fourteen years ago was a different plan that was on the table, and my concern was at the time, because I was an activist at Redwood School, because we had a severe overcrowding issue. We had, my daughter entered kindergarten in 1995, we had 250 students at Redwood School. By the time she was in fifth grade, that number jumped up to 550 students, paddock, farms was being built and whatnot. So, I had a lot of concerns with, with schoolchildren in any particular plan, and those still are my concerns. I've been, I've expressed my concerns in the past few years to, to a few of you, when you've asked me my thoughts as a school board member, and my status hasn't, my opinion hasn't changed. I'm supportive of downtown redevelopment. I live down in the Lord's section, so I drive by it every day, so we definitely need a plan in place to make our community more vibrant. My, and I know it can be done. I see, I dropped my oldest off, my old, too old, I'm sorry, I'm rushing, because I know it, we're pushed for time here. I'm used to those debates, I'm trying to get everything out in a short period. But we, I've been down to Harrison, I've seen the improvements there, and I know South Orange, Maplewood, Montclair, so we are, we are in need. I'm not up to speed with the plan you have placed in now, so I would need to be up to speed and have to do my due diligence.
Thank you. Michelle, what energy and what experience are you going to bring to the township council from your successes at the Board of Education?
Okay. I'm a team player, there's no I in team. I can accomplish what I have done with re-registration, our facilities, our facility policy, savings hundreds of thousands of dollars by closing up the grammar schools on the weekends, and bringing everybody to West Orange High School, and opening up one middle school, maybe some weekends for Mr. Keough, a second middle school for the activities. But I'm a team player, I can do nearly what I do without my colleagues' support. I'm a very good communicator, I brought transparency to the school board. When I first was on the school board, not one meeting was televised. I advocated with my colleagues, and I talked to them, and we got the, we got the budget meetings televised. Did a little more advocating, and that became once a month. And so, now we're, every, every meeting we have televised. So, I like to take the time to sit with my colleagues, to sit with residents, and in this case, many parents, listen to students, and listen to what's going on. So, I am a problem solver, I am a team builder, and I feel that I've been a very good communicator over the past ten years.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman McCartney.
I think you just really answered my question, but I believe that we all have the capacity to lead, and this, now this opportunity is presenting itself for the seat on the council. It's one thing to lead, but it's another to get things, people to follow. So, you know, you're saying that you advocate, and you really have had successful campaigns, how, how do you get people to follow?
It's communication, it's listening, it's not about me, it's, it's about them, it's, it's about what needs to be done. I, I know it sounds simple, but it's just being in, just, just taking the time out and listening, and working with my colleagues. You have questions about, you know, everyone with concessions, and, you know, you take the time to call your colleague up and listen to their side of the argument, because there's always two sides of an argument. You take the time to listen to the resident, to stay maybe to midnight in the parking lot, talking to disgruntled parents, and, and taking the time to listen, but not making false promises. I never make false promises. I have some people that may not support me sometimes, because I'm very truthful, and I'm very, a direct person. And a few of you working with me in the past know that, you know, I'm going to work hard, you know, I'm going to do my due diligence. I read my packet when I receive it on Fridays, and if I have any questions for administration, they get the phone call. I, if I feel that I don't have enough information to make a decision, I will table a, you know, a contract or a decision placed before me. So, I take my time, I do my due diligence, and I communicate with all stakeholders involved.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukowiek.
Thank you. Ms. Castellino, you've been on the, the school board, town council liaison committee since 2006, and there was little mention of this earlier. Could you, what would you say are the committee's two or three biggest achievements in the time that you've been on?
Hmm, that's a tough one, because every time we've met, we try to line up our contracts, and that has been very difficult, working with our administration and your administration, and just trying to find the right time to line up, especially with the sanitation contracts and the recycling contracts, because they just don't meet. But I know the school board, we have utilized services from you with, with the tree cuttings. I know we had helped you out in the past with the telephone system with our IT people, because I know you were in desperate need of IT services in the past few years, so we sent our employees your way, I believe with the gas down at one of the stations. So, there's quite a few things. We don't meet as often as we would like to meet. A lot of times, I'll pick up the phone and just contact Councilwoman McCartney, and we'll have conversations with each other of ideas that we could run back and forth. But working with Janice Gary Adams has been instrumental in, with the re-registration issues, and I think that needs to continue to grow. You mentioned when you first come on here, what you would want to do, that's what kind of, other than, of course, getting involved in your issues, because I've been very busy with my colleagues with their own issues, I'll be honest with you, I have to get caught up to speed on what, all the functions here, but if you choose me, I will be a good team builder and a good leader for you.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk? It's hot in here.
Yeah, you want the air on?
Please turn the air on, yes. It's not on, the air is not on.
No, it was turned off. Jerome Eben?
Good evening, Mr. Eben.
Good evening, Council President. Let me get my, my five-minute speech to two minutes. Council President, council people, and certain residents, I appreciate all of you to be here tonight to listen to this, how government really works. When Marsha and I moved here almost forty years ago, I already knew West Orange. We love West Orange. I have exhibited broad community action with the goal to promote value to the general public, and believing strongly that this is, this is essential fostering a just society. My longtime service in various township boards and committees began in 1976. I spearheaded the original idea of renovating the Edison Battery Building as a mixed-use structure with a low-level parking garage in what is called a napkin, a napkin sketch I drew for then-mayor Bill Koozie. It would be extremely important to have someone with my credentials on the township council. As an architect, I am an advocate of effect, and an effective mentor and continuous leader in my profession. I recently completed three years as a director on the National American Institute of Architects Board. In fact, the AIA selected me to testify in front of a congressional committee as an expert on brownfields, and I then helped Congressman Bill Pasquarel organize two informational seminars on the subject. From the time that my daughter, Deena, now a middle school teacher, and my son, Jacob, who is just beginning his career as a filmmaker, check him out on YouTube, entered the school system, and throughout their tenure, I was very active and held maybe leadership positions in the PTA. While on Superintendent Tarnoff's West Orange High School Auditorium Committee, I insisted that the renovation had to include a superior acoustical system, is the reason why today you can hear your children's and grandchildren's talented performances. Maybe by being appointed to the council, I can solve the acoustical problems in this chamber. I knew I would get a laugh with that. Currently, I serve-
Time.
Okay, questions?
Councilwoman McCartney.
So, you mentioned your children, our children have gone to school together, so we've known each other for thirty-some-odd years.
Five years, yeah.
Okay. So, since, and we-
Yeah, I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble hearing you all.
I'm saying that our children went to school together, so we have known each other for over thirty years. And I, we serve, currently serve together on the planning board, so I know you. And so, my questions to you are a little kind of off-center, I guess. And one in particular is that there are certain quotes that resonate with me, and one in particular is a Chinese philosopher, Confucius, and he's credited in saying, "I hear, I know, I see, I remember, I do, I understand." So, how would you put that philosophy into an issue, or something that you would like to tackle right now?
Well, the biggest thing that I, and I think you know this, the biggest thing that I want to tackle is zoning violations, and they are horrific in this community. Being an architect, I'm very visual, there are just too many zoning violations. I recently wrote the mayor an email, I did copy the council president on that, and it's a shame, because we, we work together on, on the planning board very hard to improve the corner of Valley and Central, and we worked very hard to, with the downtown alliance, to do some nice landscaping. The two street trees are dead, the ground sign entrance was hit by a truck that was being delivered, delivering Coca-Cola midday, when they were not supposed to be delivering Coca-Cola. I was there, I saw it, the light pole is still crooked, the sign was repaired after three months, and it was only got repaired because I actually asked somebody to do something. So, zoning violations are paramount in this town, and unless somebody does something about it, the town is never going to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kukowiek.
Thank you. You and I spoke at length before you came up here, so I have, I'm a little bit familiar. I want to just perhaps bring out to everyone else sort of your perspective on redevelopment, and where we need to go, and how we need to go to get there here in town, both downtown and also out in the valley.
Well, as you know, Councilman, I'm a proponent of the downtown alliance and the downtown redevelopment. I have been pushing that redevelopment for a very long time. My understanding is that their shovel is going to go in the ground on September 30th, as of, what I heard on, on one of the council meetings. I hope it really happens, and I think that's the reason why you need someone. When I look around this council, I see varying professions, you're a journalist, Councilman Cirillo is in real estate or housing and sake, I believe, corporate retail corporation, and a local business owner and daycare center, of which I've designed several of them. So, not hers, but others. So, I think I bring to the council my skills as an architect, as a team builder, as a problem solver.
Thank you. Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. Jerry, I'm a big fan of your, your feedback, your opinions, and I respect your, your professional expertise. As you know, I've told you this many times before, I'm looking at your community activities, very impressive. My question is, what's changed in regards to your interest in, in elected office, or your interest in representing residents on the council? Like, have you ever considered running for council prior? I've only known you since like ninety-eight, but I see that your, your track record, or your service to West Orange goes back to eighty-four.
Well, it goes actually back further than that. It goes back really to nineteen seventy-six.
So, why, tell me about-
I'm, I'm very community-minded. I was community-minded where I grew up in, I grew up in Hillside, New Jersey, I was community-minded there, I was on the first aid squad there, acted with the J.C.'s there, and, and was active generally, and actually ran for the Board of Education when I was twenty-one years old. My, my campaign was, I shouldn't say it in public, but I, I'll say it, it was against tenure. And it was because, and it was because, I used to get phone calls in the middle of the night from teachers, and it was because I really believed at the time that I had had some good teachers and I had some bad teachers, and I wanted to find a way to, to promote the good teachers and get rid of the bad teachers. I was twenty-one years old at the time, so just to, just to follow that. So, I've been very community-minded, primarily since I was a child. My parents came from the other side of the world, they escaped a horrific time in history, and I think, I think my mother was the one that was the kind of pusher to, to really get involved, and that's my lasting memory there.
Thank you, Council. Jerry, we go back a while, too, and we both run, you know, between Gregory School Strawberry PTA and being involved with the community, but also being on the first Main Street Development Corporation, I as the chairman, you as the vice chairman. In all the years that passed, since the Main Street Development Corporation, what do you see as positives that have happened, and what do you see as the negatives?
I think, I think the positive, the positives are now with, with Megan as the executive director, to try to instill in the, in the people that have businesses in the corridor, to really start to spruce up their stores and to get, get better. And the goal of the, of the downtown alliance is to get rid of vacancies downtown. I think one of the goals that I would like to see, if I was on, on the council, would be to take Megan out of the basement of this building and put her in a store on, on the corridor. I think she could be a great asset there, and I think it would be much better to be right out in the open on the street, where store owners could come in and talk with her and help her. We've gone to several conferences all over the state. The state downtown is, despite the governor, is quite active and helpful in trying to help small business, understand business, how to do, how to decorate your store, how to keep your store clean, how to employ local people. So, those kind of things are the kind of things that I think I would like to, to do if I was on the council.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
We've gone to several conferences all over the state. The state downtown is, despite the governor, is quite active and helpful in trying to help small business, understand business, how to do, how to decorate your store, how to keep your store clean, how to employ local people. So those kind of things are the kind of things that I think I would like to do if I was on the council.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
So I do believe that there are strength in numbers, and I think that leaders should work to unite. How do you see yourself working to unite, to tackle the zoning issues or the other issues that you see in town?
Well, I think you know that, and we'll go back almost thirty years to when I was active in the PTA, and when my children were in Gregory School with your children, and we saw issues of old calamine doors that didn't close, that were, again, technically against the fire code. We saw school buses turn the corner from going south on Gregory Avenue, turning the corner to go west up Walker Road, mounting the sidewalk. And we ran a campaign to break that sidewalk and bring that sidewalk back so that the school buses would have a proper turning radius and wouldn't possibly run up on the sidewalk. We also, we also were able to convince, I think, the council at the time to have blinking lights on Gregory Avenue that would blink during the school hours and to actually enforce the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on that, on that street. We also worked very hard to try to stop school closings. Population was going down, but we knew, like everything else, it's going to go back up, and we tried to, we tried to stop some of the school closings, including the West Orange High School.
Fifteen seconds.
And we were not successful in that. But apparently, it's panned out to be pretty well, pretty good.
Thank you. Sorry. Councilman Kocoviac.
Yes, thank you. I know you feel very strongly about zoning, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I do know that there is a difference between the executive branch, which is the administration, and the legislative branch here. How would you fix that issue that you see from the legislative side when you don't really, you aren't on the administration side and can't actually give the orders?
Well, I think, I think it behooves us to have a, and sometimes the mayor sits in that chair over there, and he does come to council meetings. I think it's time to have a good sit-down with the mayor. I did write him a note on the, on the 7-Eleven. I'm hoping that things are going to happen there. I already see that the signs across the street from Kraus' which I also wrote about are coming down slowly. So I think it's a matter of pointing out to the administration that we're, we want to have a beautiful community, and we want the existing laws that are on the book, on the books that this council or previous councils have passed to be enforced. We want the planning board and the zoning board, and I'll tell you, the zoning board at the last zoning board meeting, my understanding is that they, someone on the zoning board, I was not there, I only heard it from the objector, that someone stated that the zoning board doesn't even look, read the correspondence from the Downtown Alliance. They don't, they negate it. I find that unconscionable. I don't know why it is like that. I know the planning board doesn't. I know the planning board works with the Downtown Alliance. So I would like to find out what the situation is there.
Councilman Cirillo.
Yes, thank you, Council President. We spoke a lot about zoning and planning issues, that's background and expertise. Whether it be zoning, a zoning or planning matter, what do you think as a community is the biggest vulnerability in West Orange, and how would we address, how should we address that?
I think we're a very interesting and diverse community, both economically, racially, geographically. We're a twelve-point-one-mile-square community. We go from practically, I think the elevation of my house is thirty-five feet above sea level, and at the top of Walker Road, it's about a thousand feet above sea level. So that's a big change in elevation from low to high. I'm glad I live at the bottom of the hill because if I have to call 911 and get the fire department, I know the truck will make it up to my house. I'm not so sure it'll make it up to the top of the hill. I've seen it go up to the top of the hill at a very slow speed. So I think we have some challenges there in the equipment. I think the equipment, the fire equipment is pretty old, and I think it's time that we start looking at trying to help keep safety paramount.
Emergency, emergency response. Thank you.
Jerry, what do you think of the concept of complete streets?
Well, it's interesting that you ask that question. I was appointed by AIA New Jersey President Michael Hanahan about three years ago to be the AIA New Jersey representative on a complete street plan that was being put out by Rutgers University with the various other organizations, the planners, the engineers, the landscape architects. And we came up with a brochure that we all wrote together. We worked together for several months, and one of the items in the brochure is complete streets. Complete streets, we've endorsed it at the planning board. Ben Heller was the chairman at the time. He's now moved on to Hoboken, but we, we're doing it. And I think tomorrow morning, I'm going to call the county and ask them to remove the down trees on Walker Road at the Turtleback Zoo that have been there for at least a week and a half, blocking the complete streets sidewalk that we put there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eben.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Would you just throw more in here?
Bert Peronella.
Good evening, Mr. Peronella. Good evening. Council President and members of the council, good evening. I am Bert Peronella, a resident of Pleasant Alleyway for forty-two years. I came to the United States fifty-two years ago as a student at Transatlantic Polytechnic Institute, RPI, in Troy, New York, where I earned my three master's degrees in management science, mechanical engineering, and computer science, and my PhD in computer science in nineteen-seventy. My lifelong career in computers began with IBM in Endicott, New York, then for twenty years as director of the worldwide computer division of Foster Wheeler, a four-billion-dollar engineering corporation, until my retirement on January one, two thousand. My wife Marian and I have two children and five grandchildren. God has been good to me and my family, and it is payback time to my church and to my town if I have an opportunity to serve. I got involved with the town council when I volunteered my economic analysis of the Edison redevelopment project with the council and Mayor Parisi. I have attended a few council meetings, and I've seen the videos of most of them. Honestly, there have been a few meetings where I believe the process can be improved by the council. As an outsider, I hope to bring ideas to the council to help implement some of the changes. I bring to the council no personal agenda nor campaign promises, other than my professional experience in my resume, my common sense, and my desire to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Kocoviac.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Peronella, you sort of touched on what might be some of your priorities if you were to get on the council. What would be your two or three priorities?
Well, I was very interested in the redevelopment project because of the economic analysis behind it. Not so much about the six-point-three bond or the overcrowding or the traffic, but just on the economic side of it, what does it mean as far as cash flow to the township. My second priority would be to try to improve the process of our council meetings. There are some council meetings that, to be honest with you, are not really going too smoothly. So there might be things that can be done to improve that. I really only have two priorities. I'm open for a third one.
Thank you.
Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Mr. Peronella, and thank you so much for the feedback and all the research that you've provided us as we move forward with this public policy. Let's talk about redevelopment a little bit. You talked about analysis, mathematical equations. What would you think the ultimate end game, the ultimate goal is when utilizing redevelopment as a tool to improve, like, the aging portions of a municipality? What, what is the end game? What are we looking to do, in your opinion?
Could you elaborate your question, please?
Sure. In your opinion, when you use redevelopment as a tool to improve aging portions of a municipality, what do you think the end game is to you, in your opinion? Meaning, and I'm going to tell you why I ask, and I know there's no back and forth. We've approved this public policy decision to use the tools of, provided by state law, whether it be tax abatements, whether it be pilots, to improve an aging portion of the municipality. Should we consider that again in the future in another part of town or perhaps in the same area? What do you think the end game is, in your opinion?
To be honest with you, I'm not qualified to answer that part of your question. My expertise is in the mathematics behind this. You give me the numbers, I crunch out the numbers, and I'll give you the rate of, rate of, rate of return, I'll give you the payback, and that's all you'll get from me. Now, as far as the science behind it, which is really expertise to other people, I wouldn't venture into that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melo, thank you for being here tonight, sir. I've seen your presentations, your number crunching and everything else, and thank you for submitting that to the council for our review. What do you think are the pluses? What do you think is one plus of the current development, and what do you think is a negative of the current development, the way it's being presented and developed?
To be honest with you, because of the minimum on the pilot, which is six-hundred-forty-thousand, as far as the cash flow to the township, it's really a no-brainer. Even with, just the, just the minimum six-hundred-forty-thousand, the township could net almost three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. Now, if you argue, how about the students that will come in? So let's say ten thousand a head, which I think is too much, which can be negotiated. I had a meeting with Mayor Parisi on that, because I argued with him, it's not fair that it's ten thousand a student, because the cost is marginal. If a classroom has seven vacancies and you put seven more students in there, it's not costing you ten thousand per head. But anyway, that's beside the point. The, to me, it's a no-brainer. If the project goes through, the town will not lose because of the minimum guarantee of six-hundred-forty-thousand. Now, they're projecting one-point-one million, which is better than the one million that they were projecting before, if the building is fully occupied. That's a big cash flow to the town.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman McCartney.
Well, just to follow up on that, two things. One, I really appreciate your common sense approach, and I do appreciate your impeccable data analysis. I have been sharing information, I only met you once at a council meeting here, and I've just been sending you information, and I really do appreciate the impeccable data analysis that you provide. However, what you just said about the students, the number of students, the studies that we did have during the whole planning session, the likely number of schoolchildren at one-hundred percent occupancy is maybe seventeen. The data that you just recently gave us, that it missed the nine-hundred-thousand dollars at the even seventy-five percent occupancy. So there were numbers, though your net cash flow and your debt service rounded out to zero. There was a lot of information that was not in this. So I, I came away with the feel that you really were not a proponent of the redevelopment project, but yet in the past, when we've spoken or emailed, not spoken, I thought you were.
I was always, I was always a proponent.
Okay.
I was, in fact, the late Gary Engler, you said his name, the late...
Yes.
We had a big argument about that in the, in one of the websites, because he was questioning some of the numbers that I was cutting out.
Yes, I'm doing the same.
I was always in favor of the redevelopment, because I'm looking at it strictly as a cash flow problem. I'm not looking at how much traffic it might, it might create. Because Councilman Underton at that time said, "If there's going to be a traffic problem, we'll solve it. As long as we have the cash flow, we have the money, we will solve the traffic problem." So I stay away from that. I'm sticking strictly with the mathematics.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kocoviac.
Yes, thank you. As I've mentioned before, one of my concerns is about if we appoint somebody who then runs again in November two thousand and sixteen, they potentially have a significant advantage over anybody else who's running who hasn't already been a sitting councilperson. Just wanted to ask you very quickly, would you consider pledging not to run again in two thousand and sixteen?
Well, as I indicated to you in my first letter of interest, I have no plans at all to run for reelection to this position. I am not a politician. The reason I'm really interested to come in at this time is because the redevelopment project seems to be getting hot again. The momentum is there, there's a new financier, hopefully they'll break ground on September thirty, and I want to be part of this. When this, when there is a redevelopment people standing, standing here, I wish I were in one of your seats, that I could ask him some probing questions to dig deeper into what they're doing. That's why I want to be in one of these seats during this time.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. We all here, we're property taxpayers. We're property taxpayers. Part of the reason why we're here is to safeguard everybody's investment in our community. It's a beautiful community. We believe in it, we want to move it forward, we want to maintain the quality of life. In your opinion, what do you think is the most appealing part about our community? When you talk to someone from outside of West Orange, what do you tell them about West Orange?
I've told them a hundred times about this. It's near the airport, it's near New York City, it's near the shore, it's near, it's near everywhere. We have no earthquakes, we have no, we have no floods. What else can we ask for?
Thank you. It's beautiful.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mr. Peronella, thank you. What do you think is West Orange's biggest asset?
I think the biggest assets of West Orange are its people. Okay, being a Filipino-American, I have all kinds of friends, all races, all religion, and I just love it here. I have two children who grew up here, I have five grandchildren, and they all love it here in West, in West Orange. I think it's the people that makes the difference.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman McCartney.
Nice answer. Thank you. I know we talk a lot about redevelopment, and that's pretty much how our conversations have been over the past few years, but are there other initiatives that you would like to see if you did have a seat on this council? Are there other initiatives, or like, where do your interests lie? I know it's all about the numbers, but what else would you like to tackle?
Well, as being a computer guy, I'm a very process-oriented guy. I want to review the process of how our council meetings are being conducted, okay? I think there are things that can be improved in terms of, when you have a meeting, is it the process that controls how the members behave, or is it possible for a member to define the process? I think that's not very clearly defined in our ordinances, and I think there's some areas there where we can tighten it up a little bit that we will not allow. For example, I'm not pointing to any particular member here, but the way our system works right now, one member can take over seventy-five percent of that meeting by just asking all kinds of questions for every ordinance that in the works. We have to do something about that.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Kocoviac.
If I could, I'd like you to continue talking about that. What's the issue and how would you fix it? And what are the other issues and how would you fix it?
Well, this is not something that I can fix by myself. I would like to sit down with the other four members and together put our heads and see how we can avoid something like that from happening. Maybe more, more homework being done outside of the meeting, more, more dialogue between administration and the, and the council, maybe more timely giving out of the agenda, because I've heard before that you got it only an hour before the meeting, so you have to ask a lot of questions. But if you can address those kind of problems, that, those are the things I'm talking about.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. My question was along those lines, and I will yield the floor so you can... My question was along those lines, and I will yield the floor so you can continue that explanation. As you know, we're fortunate to live in the greatest democracy in the world. This is not a dictatorship. And a democracy requires folks that make decisions to be able to build consensus in order for your idea, your numbers, to be agreed upon by a group, a majority. At times, we run into issues, because there may be council members that do not work well with other people. Should you present a position based on your analysis? How would you build consensus? How would you bring people together so that they can look at your position and say, you know what? You're right.
This is something that I cannot answer by myself. This is something that if the five council members put their heads together, they can come up with an answer. I can come up with one, but it may not be the best one. If you put your five heads together, I'm sure you'll come up with a better answer.
Very good answer. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellner. Thank you for your time this evening, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, guess who it is?
Adam Goldman.
You know it had to be one or the other, right? Good evening, Adam.
Good evening. So, good evening, council members. I've been a proud resident of West Orange for the past 25 years, my wife 50 years as well. Prior to my career with Dunkin' Donuts, I was an executive and consultant for companies such as IBM, Ernst &amp; Young, Cooper's &amp; Lybrun. I have a background that combines the love of West Orange, business experience, and out-of-the-box thinking. This background enables me to develop ideas to better the town by developing new revenue sources, attracting new businesses to town, streamlining government services, and still work within a fiscally responsible budget, and most importantly, as a member of a team that has the best interest of West Orange at heart. I would describe myself as fiscally responsible, having developed and managed budgets for decades, as well as a successful business. However, I also feel you have to spend money in order to make money. You can't always focus strictly on the bottom line. Sometimes you have to do them because it's just the right thing to do. In local government, you have to do the same balancing act. Of course, you have to be fiscally responsible. However, some things that make West Orange so wonderful are the same things that cost money. The services such as the jitney makes West Orange an attractive place to live over other surrounding towns. If appointed to the remainder of Ms. Spango's term, I would make it my mission to bring new businesses to town by ensuring the town's services and policies are business-friendly, as well as actively pursuing businesses that join myself in making West Orange their business home. I'd also foster a relationship between the schools and local businesses to develop mentor programs for budding entrepreneurs, after-school placement for kids interested in entering the workforce, or just learning about different career options. Lastly, I would be another champion of West Orange and everything that makes this town great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Goldman, thank you for your interest. Thank you for being here tonight. Tell me about, in your opinion, what's the most appealing part of our municipality? When someone asks you about West Orange from another town, from another state, what do you tell them about our town?
Well, West Orange is a bedridden community of New York City, essentially. It's one of those that we're close enough to New York City for those that need to commute in there, but it has some of the best schools, it has great restaurants in town, it has some of the best services of a municipality. It's a large community, so it has all different individual communities in West Orange, whether it be the Pleasantale section, whether it be the Gregory section. Each one has their own pluses and brings something else to the community, and I think that's what is wonderful about it. From a business perspective, it's one now that I have two businesses in town. I've just invested another several million dollars on redeveloping a property, because again, I'm investing in town, because this is a wonderful place to not only live, but also to do business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, we know you're a very community-minded person, and people appreciate your investment in the community and your businesses, and hiring of the local people and everything else, and that's been commended. My question to you is, what are the positives and what are the negatives of the downtown development?
Well, having a business in the downtown area, I mean, Megan and really the business community, as well as the municipality, has done a wonderful job of working with you to bring out the positives of Shop West Orange, the community policing that's there, the ability to work with the planning board and zoning board to assist you on what do you need to have a business open down in the valley. I think some of the areas that still need assistance is one where we have some vacancies down there. We need to identify, what do we want to see in that particular area? And maybe even get it pre-approved from zoning from a standpoint, let's say we want a restaurant in that area. Do we want seating outside? Because that's an appealing area, something that Montclair has done phenomenally well. Get it already approved for that, so when you can approach a business owner and say, you can be in in four months versus you can be in in maybe seven months and not even get half of what you want. That's a big change, and I think that's something that the redevelopment does, something that Megan helps with, and the whole Downtown Alliance is working with.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
So, Adam, we've also known each other for many, many years.
Yes.
And you know that over the years, my overarching role on the council here has been to help others succeed, and by that I mean scrutinizing our township budget for taxpayers, promoting businesses in town, protecting the environment. I know the Environmental Commission is meeting across the hall, and supporting our local township departments and volunteer organizations. So tell me how you see us working together if you were had a seat here on the council.
Well, again, it's one of those that a town such as West Orange, one of its appeal is the services that it provides. There are services that not everyone may use, but by providing those services, you're making the town attractive for those people to come in and live in the community. It's one to open it up to ideas that may be outside the box. It's one, as we talk about the jitney, luckily, I do not commute into the city anymore after many, many years, but I see the advantage of it. One of the things that we could do to help offset the costs there, and I've seen it actually in the ferries in New York, is they have advertisements inside, they have actually a TV that scrolls through. Be fantastic to link that with the Downtown Alliance and be able to have businesses up there advertising on there, not a lot of money, but something that maybe a few extra dollars it would pay for maybe an extra jitney run, maybe an extra jitney. So it's something where, again, my big piece is, let's come up with ideas that are outside the box, see how we could possibly pay for them, and then try to implement these ideas in there. Again, just quickly.
Fifteen seconds.
The whole green aspect, it's one of those that, West Orange, I will be the first electric vehicle charging station in the township of West Orange, besides Edison, and Susan did mention that earlier. Did have to mention that.
Time.
But again, that's something that's important.
Councilwoman Kocovia.
Yes, thank you. When we were speaking earlier, you were talking about how you thought transparency might be able to help the situation, not only in increasing efficiency, bringing business, but you're also talking about other items. Could you just maybe touch on those a little bit more?
Well, I think transparency is important. It's one where, in my own businesses, I found that employees think that every cup of coffee that's sold immediately goes into my pocket, which I wish it did. But by sitting down with them and literally explaining all the aspects that make up the business, someone who is literally working that front counter now understands that, believe me, there are 25 other expenses that are involved there. And I think that's something even in the council we can do. In some cases, it's the education part. There are many people that may not understand the process of what the council does, how things may get suggested, how policies are made, and maybe that's something that can be brought up and educated through the videos that are manufactured here or presented. And really, so when they are better understood, that maybe it won't seem as foreign to them, and then essentially be more transparent for them.
Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. Adam, earlier I talked about the democratic system that we live in, the greatest democratic system in the world. We're not a dictatorship. It requires consensus building. You spoke about the idea of possibly installing advertisement in the jitney shuttles. Okay, let's say you want to bring that as a councilperson, how would you go about getting a consensus on that idea and working with your colleagues?
So as a consultant for many years, I was essentially the confidant of CEOs of some of the major corporations that are out there. One of the things that I always believed in was management through facts, is to come here well-prepared, have your facts, have your case study in place, present those facts. If it's something that is cost-neutral, if it's something that makes money, or in some cases, it's just a social responsibility, present those, make your point, listen to what others have to say, and then go from there. I think there is also a time when you just sit back and it's not worth the fight sometimes, and actually, my wife teaches me that, that sometimes it's just better to keep your mouth shut. It's a tough one, though, in this particular environment, because really, you do need to be vocal in it. But it's pick-your-battles from that standpoint, and if you have a good idea, you have the facts that you can present, I think the facts will speak to themselves, or speak for themselves, excuse me.
Thank you.
Adam, in these times of economic hardship, and in these times where throughout the nation the infrastructures are decaying and falling apart, not only roads and bridges, but also equipment, safety equipment, fire and police, do you think it's important to spend the money now?
It absolutely is worth spending the money now. It's one where I do it in my own business. There is a life cycle or a life expectancy of certain pieces of equipment. You need to replace those at proper times. Otherwise, you'll wind up spending all sorts of money on the constant repairs, and you wind up, between the constant repairs, the time that it's out of service, the inefficiencies of it, in the long run, you wind up losing. And essentially, what you're doing is you're passing the buck down to the next generation. There are times where you are going to have to suck it down and say, you know what? I have to spend the money now. But if it's something that will help the community, whether it be from the fire department, the police department, I mean, look, you guys made a very, very difficult position or decision with the West Orange First Aid Squad. I was on the South Orange First Aid Squad for many years. I rode the medic unit out of Mountainside Hospital. I understand that passion, I understand the history involved in it. But at the same time, I recognize that even in South Orange, we had a hard time getting shifts all the time. And really, life safety is in the importance, and it's something that if we have to spend the money to get the fire department to man those hours, you're going to have to do it. And so sometimes you do have to put it to the side and make those hard decisions.
Good answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney.
I like what you said before about sometimes it's better to just be quiet, because sometimes when you win, you end up losing anyway.
Yes.
So ever since our last council meeting, I have received numerous emails from individuals that have submitted their resumes to meet for a cup of coffee, not necessarily at Dunkin' Donuts, but...
There's no better place.
Yeah, well...
No, there's not?
No. In my opinion, there is no better place.
So if we were to meet for a cup of coffee?
Yes.
Tell me, what would you tell me? What would be an initiative or something that you would want to discuss?
Again, I think one of the areas that I've been the most frustrated with as a business owner, but it's not just as a business owner, it's really as a resident here, is that I've had a very difficult time finding employees from the town who want to work. No, I mean, from a standpoint of even the kids in the high school, for them to understand that there's a work-study program, for them to understand that, you know, they can come and even, I was joking with Mayor Parisi, his first job was at McDonald's. I think 65% of America has worked at a fast-food place, essentially. But it's not just working there, it's the understanding of, the learning of what it's like to run a business, what it's like to meet with customers, what it's like to unfortunately get yelled at occasionally, and how to, you know, turn that around. And it's something I don't think we do well enough, is marry the schools, whether it be the public or the private, with the business owners or other occupations in here. And it would be a wonderful ability to do that, and to really grow future entrepreneurs, grow future doctors, dentists, et cetera, and even future council members.
There you go. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kocovia.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to have you continue talking about this. I know we spent time talking about, you felt like the town doesn't do enough for the kids. Maybe you could just talk about what you think the council could do to help you in those areas if you're on it.
I think it's one that, I know there are many individual committees that the council has and sits on, and I think that's an area that maybe it could be a committee that is not currently established, that more that mentoring program, something where we can match up business owners or professionals out there, teachers, policemen, et cetera, with kids who may be very interested in it. I remember growing up, and I know we still have it in the younger ages, which is the career days in the elementary school. I occasionally go to them. It's one that I don't think we take it all the ways up to the high school level. It's almost like college, college, you know, you have to go to college. Well, it's wonderful if you know what you want to do from that standpoint. And so I think if, maybe that would be a committee that if it's not open, and really, it is just to bridge that gap, it would be, you know, something interesting that I would like to, you know, kind of take the lead on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you know, Adam, we've all worked our way through retail and everything else and for the...
Absolutely.
I'm sorry? No, I was friendly ice cream, so it's okay. Council members, before we go into deliberations, I would first like to thank all the applicants tonight. It shows the breadth and length of the talent and the excitement of the residents of the township of West Orange, and you're all to be commended for taking the time, for taking the effort to submitting your resumes, to coming here tonight and answering questions, letting the residents of the Township Council know who you are, get to know you better. And we hope that you take your talents and your efforts and you go on to other things, that you stay involved with our community at every level. We don't want you to leave here tonight and say, well, that's it. We'd like to see you get involved in our communities, get involved with our school system, get involved with our Downtown Alliance, get involved with any boards that have openings that the council members do have, get involved in our rec programs, in our mountaintop, in our rec, and POW. These are great organizations, and you can take your talents and your energies, and you could help the future council members and the future leaders of our country just with the efforts that you'll put forward. So again, on behalf of my colleagues on the Township Council, we thank you, and we hope you'll stay involved. Madam Clerk?
Now, it would be for a member of council to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Trink.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
Make a motion to fill the seat if anyone wants to make that motion.
Are we going to talk about it, or...
I would like to talk...
You can make a motion and debate the motion.
Okay. Councilwoman, would you like to talk about it?
Oh, my. Well, let me just say, I am so impressed by the vast array of resumes, the ones that we did receive, that we did not hear, and of course, the ones that we just listened to. I'm extremely impressed. And though I know a few of the candidates for a long time, I really don't know many of them. And I feel like our charge right now is to fill the seat with the most qualified person. And I don't want to say it's difficult, because I think that that's, I don't know, easy to say that. What I would like to propose for most of the people that just spoke, and particularly ending up with Adam, is Economic Development Commission. You said that you wanted to start something new. We actually have, it's defunct. Just last year, I just reinstated the Environmental Commission. Between the comments that Dr. Calfani made, Michaela Bennett, Jerry is so knowledgeable, I already know that with all the ordinances that he knows, and Bert, I feel like we have a commission already put together. So I really would like, that's what I would like to initiate, to reinstate this Economic Development Commission and submit your names to the mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am going to, I have to nominate, I want to nominate Michelle Castellino for this particular role. role, because just my reasoning is that I have worked with Michelle in the past. I have not really worked with these people. I have worked with Michelle, and my charge this evening is to find the most qualified person. And knowing how she does move and how she does attack issues, addresses concerns, does stop and listen, that's my nomination. But I have to say that I am so impressed, again, I want to stress that I am so impressed, Dr. Calfani, everyone, Dr. Calfani and everyone that spoke. But I really would like you to, I'm sorry, really, do I have 15 minutes?
No.
I would really like all of these candidates to help reinstate the Economic Development Commission so that I can get to know you better. Comments that were just made, I know that the high school already instituted a structured learning program. So we are working with interns. Me, as a business owner, I am already working with those interns. The Chamber of Commerce already has young entrepreneurs. So there are a lot of things happening that we can maybe have that cup of coffee and talk about things that are happening.
So you would ask for just a second now?
Okay, now, I'd like to make, but can I make a comment before I make this? You know, I'd just like to say that I was totally impressed by the qualifications of the applicants. And to what Councilwoman McCartney said, I know if you ever heard, that we do have a new organization called the Pedestrian Safety and Advisory Board, and the Traffic and Safety Commission, which through the ordinance, we have been able to get a grant from Rutgers University to do a townwide study of our streets and roads and traffic. But also, for four months, co-op students from the Blaustein School of Public Policy and Planning will be spending time here in West Orange, redeveloping our complete streets. To that end, I'm asking the applicants tonight to, please, become involved, ask us, contact us. There are a lot of things we can use, your talents, your opinions and your intelligence, to help us move forward to make West Orange a smart street community, a safe community, and a community moving forward. I've known Michelle Castellino a number of years. Her dedication, her heart, her community involvement, her family's involvement in the community. I believe she brings, and it's no disregard to other applicants, but I believe she brings the ability to step in this position, to jumpstart and move ahead, and help us achieve what we need to make the township of West Orange an even better community. And I do believe that, and I believe she has the talent and wherewithal and heart. Her heart is in the right place. It's the benefit of all the residents of West Orange. So, Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a second to that nomination.
Okay.
A motion to vote for debate now by the council.
Councilman Kukoviac.
Good, thank you. I agree with you. The people that we talked to tonight are all just immensely impressive, and they all bring a lot of different strengths to the table and a lot of different perspectives. And I love some of, a lot of the ideas that were talked about tonight. I think they could all do a good job here. And I also want to thank the other 11 candidates that didn't make it to this, to the list of the interviews. There were some really good people there that I hope will continue to try to become more involved with our community. As I mentioned before, I am concerned that if we appoint either Mr. Swarzbaum or Ms. Castellino to the vacancy, that it will render the Board of Education election moot. And we just went through the process of when Councilwoman Spango retired, excuse me, not retired, she resigned. She resigned a couple of days after the deadline that would have allowed the voters here to choose the person to be on the council to fill out the rest of her term in the election this year, but that's not going to happen. So we're appointing somebody for about 14 months. So I'm concerned about all this disenfranchisement of voters that seems to be going on. And so I'm concerned that, I'm also concerned that anyone that we appoint who would run in November 2016, when former Councilwoman Spango's term expires, that they would have significant potential for significant advantage in that race. And I'm told that the town council here traditionally would fill vacancies with people who pledged not to run again. So that would eliminate that potential issue, at least for me. I spoke with everyone here tonight before they came here, except for Ms. Castellino, and I asked them if they would pledge to not run. And two of them said that they wouldn't, Mr. Perrinilla and Ms. Bennett. And I would feel better asking either one of them. They're both excellent candidates. I think I would favor Mr. Perrinilla a little bit more than Ms. Bennett, just because of his financial and process background, even though, as you could tell if you were listening to him, he doesn't really agree with me on many things. But I think he'd be a big asset to the council. And I think, I think Councilwoman McCartney was pointing out that some of his analysis wasn't necessarily complete, and I think Mr. Perrinilla would agree with you, and that's why he said, "Boy, if he could get up here and get to know what we know," that I think we would really benefit more from them. So I'm sure we're moving towards a vote on Ms. Castellino, but I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Thank you, Council.
And certainly, there's nothing personal against Ms. Castellino. You can't, you can't find too many people who have contributed more to the township and are deeper in the roots. It's, I just have an issue about the disenfranchisement.
Thank you. Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. Having run, well, I didn't talk to any of the candidates beforehand, and in many of these cases, this is the first time I hear about the opinions and the positions and the feelings about our municipality and about our town. I can tell you from, again, from having run into elections at this point, that everyone would make an excellent candidate for this council. Everyone would make an absolute excellent candidate for this council. Everyone has a lot of credentials, specific specializations that this council would greatly benefit from. I do want to say...
I'm sorry. There's an election in 15 months, so...
Yeah, you know what? That's a great point. Yeah, yeah. I hope, I hope to see these names in 15 months. I do have to say that I remember working with Michelle in 2006, 2005, on this issue with registration. It was, it was a matter of property taxes from my perspective. This was before I was a councilperson. I was elected in 2010, and I've, I became involved in the town back in 98, just grassroots, just getting involved for the sake of the love of this municipality. So I admire that, and I have a lot of respect for that, for what Jerry has done throughout his life here in the municipality. And I have worked with Michelle, and I thought that that was a very important issue. You remember going down to the Department of Education at 7:00 in the morning, driving down, talking about this issue, taking, you recall, talking about Nutley and how they had recently implemented a program? I remember that stuff. That was, what, nine years ago? So I lend a lot of value and credibility to that. I think, not to take anything away from our other candidates, beautiful presentations, beautiful words, but something to say about that, long service. I remember when you ran for council in 2002? 2002?
Yes, it was.
2002.
Yes, it was, at Hazel.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I remember that. So I know in Eagle Rock Civic Association, I lend a lot of credibility. That's important to me, as Jerry has presented with his record. Not to take anything away from the other candidates, Mr. Perrinilla, you all have different areas that the council would benefit from, but I think Michelle has a track record that I can stand by and I'm willing to support.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd just like to finish, is that, you know, there were comments about people asking not to run, but we've had council candidates who were put on temporarily, said they wouldn't run, and they ran for election anyway. So that should not be an issue. Talking about disenfranchising with the voters, you can still do, and you may think this is crazy, but you still have time to do a writing candidate. And about 10 years ago, there was a writing candidate for the Board of Education and came within 200 votes of winning the election. So don't give up. You don't have to say, just have you have two candidates, get somebody, find somebody really, really wants to do it, and have them do a writing, you know, campaign. You're not disenfranchising the voters, you're giving them another opportunity. So that's all I want to say. And like I said, it doesn't take away from any of the other applicants. You all have tremendous qualifications, you've all done tremendous service, Jerry, you know, everybody, you've done tremendous service to the township of West Orange. Adam, all of you have given something back, and we look forward to feeling involved.
Yes, Council President. And to all the candidates, I'm going to tell you, I'm barely here on this council. The first time, I think I won by 150 votes, and the second time was like 200 votes. So don't get discouraged, please. I want to see you on that ballot, whether it be the next time around, whether it be the time after. So it's, if I could barely make it to this town council, I'm sure that, you know, you should, you should absolutely give it a shot.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman.
Be realistic.
Absolutely. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Stay.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Three votes, councilperson has been selected.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Councilman. I make a motion to adjourn the council meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
Or a favor?
Thank you, West Orange.
Bye.
We'll see you at our September 29th council meeting. Thank you.